So we can, because my prior employer is a bigger company, if you want to call it that, we can tag in into their pool and get a better rate because we have the same investor.
She's available to come and present to the council, and if you would like to have her come and present, we can have her to be here to present to you.
Yeah.
And the best thing is that she is approved and served by a T M L. So she knows all the rules and regulations that we have to know about investing the money that is coming from T M L and also YAF.
Can we get maybe two different people?
Yes. That concludes my presentation. If you all have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you would pass on the side, can I ask you, Moreno, we need this policy for each one of our organizations, do we not? Or are we going to adopt this for all of them by the council? Because we've got four A, four B, the council.
The city only has to have one A that's in policy.
But it's got to be applicable by some reference to four A and four B.
To four, yes, and that will have to be-
Maybe they got to adopt identically, or we've got to adopt it for them.
Well, the language in the policy has to include them.
Do we have to develop a resolution for it?
Yes. We have it just tonight as information, as Mr. Moreno presented it, but it needs to be in either ordinance or a resolution. Best part is-
And through T M L, they can assist us to adapt the policy. They can guide us through where, you know, the steps that we need to go to adapt the policy, include all these component units, and that is free of service work. Now, once we require to have an investment advisor, and then that's something we have to hire that person to do that job.
A resolution or ordinance also has to include the delegation of the person-
It would be substantially informed if Mr. Moreno's presenting it to you, except that we could put it in an act of action. We need to bring it back to an act of action.
Okay, next we're going to two F, All City Youth Programs. Debbie Bolt, Councilwoman.
Ms. Bolt, say, let me speak.
In this packet, you'll notice that on the first page, it gives the letter that we've received from Boys and Girls Club. You can look over the letter a little bit more, but to go ahead and summarize, basically what they're saying is, is that we did not meet our criteria to meet our charter requirements. And since we did not meet that criteria, that they are not going to let us get our full charter for our club. The things that held us back from our charter requirement was an after-school program and was it the amount of money that we had in the bank. So those are the two items that had stopped us to proceed on with securing that charter. We were considered a promotional club. That's how boys and girls clubs become charter clubs. There are certain things that they require, such as having so many children in their program, having a hired employee for at least a year, having an after-school program is the main thing, because their main thing on the outlook is not sports programs, but the educational and the social side of their programs. And that's where we failed to comply with their charter requirements. Because of that, we brought our board together, and the board had decided that they still felt that there was a great need in our community for the programs that we were working on and the programs that we wanted to still get into this community. They decided that they wanted to change the name from Boys and Girls Club to All City Youth Programs. That was voted on at our last board meeting, and they asked if we would, if I would come in front of council and address you on a partnership. I know some of you are probably wondering, what in the heck do they want a partnership for? But if you bear with me, I'll go through this really quick, and it's going to be easy to explain. On the second page, I did give you an outline of my speech, so if there's anything you don't catch in my presentation, you can go back and reference it on the outline. I wanted to go ahead and quote to you by a senator that said, "I continue to believe that if children are given the necessary tools to succeed, they will succeed beyond their wildest dreams." Our board is so much into that. We have a wonderful group of people. We have a wonderful group of volunteers that give everything they can for our community to help our kids succeed into whatever that they want to be. The needs that the board sees in this community is cognitive summer programs, which Boys and Girls Club did start. This was our fourth summer, I believe, in the event center. Our program is very cognitive, for those of you that don't know what we do there. Our program consists of, we started with the seven continents, and the first summer was like a promotional program where we had seven weeks. We hit every continent. The kids learned about all the continents. And how we work our program is that we immerse the kids into that country or that continent. Last summer, we did Asia. So for instance, in Asia, there's Japan. We did a week of Japan. This, all summer long, the kids are reading. Five days a week, we have an hour reading class. If you're in Japan, that's what you're reading about all week is Japan. One day a week, we have movie day. Of course, we watch Mulan, Japan, or Asian. We have popcorn and snow cones for the kids. One day a week, we go over to the city pool. The kids get to swim in the city pool. They learn that country's sports. We've taught the kids rugby. We've taught them cricket. We've taught them a variety of sports from the different countries, and they love it. We also teach them science. Last year was our first year also that we taught numberistics. So we were working with the kids on math. The whole program is circled around those kids learning and keeping that learning tradition so when they enter school in the fall, they haven't regressed. And that was the whole idea of this program. It's been a wonderful program, and the kids always ask, "Are we doing this again next year, Ms. Debbie?" Because they really love it. The next thing that we see a need in our community are recreational programs. Now, as Boys and Girls Club and All City, we've been very careful not to step on any of the programs that have already been here's toes. So in other words, when we started soccer, there were two programs going, us and the other soccer program. We did not do basketball in the spring because Spurs League was already doing basketball. We did basketball in the summer. There was no volleyball program here. We got the volleyball program going, no swim program going. We have that going, and of course, the summer program. We do have recreational in that because in the morning times, we have mini camps. We have gone ahead and added to the mini camps of football, golf, tennis, volleyball. We have added to that a how-to mini camp. So last summer, we did how to make a quilt, nutrition and cooking. We did, let me see if I can remember all of them, oh, planting in a container, gardening. We did all this kind of stuff because we wanted to give options for those kids that weren't sporty, that wanted to learn how to do other things, so it was open. We were very successful. Both classes were filled all summer long. Our after-school programs, those are the things that we're still wanting to get. The need that we see in this community, we're not trying to compete against the Florisville Independent School District, but the need that we're trying, that we see in this community that we need is that there's kids here that can't afford to pay for daycare, because daycare offers after-school, and then the school also charges. But we have a lot of kids here that are either on Medicaid or free lunch program. Those are the kids that we offer scholarships to. They'll be offered scholarships to this after-school program, and they are offered scholarships to the recreational programs. So we see that there's a need here to do that also. Teen programs, this is something in the future that we would also like to do. We have a lot of kids on drugs. We would like to go ahead and address that problem. We have kids here that need to know how to do financing. Our schools do not offer our kids home economics anymore, and that's something that's very important for our teens. Parenting classes, excuse me, for our teens, so they know how to be good parents, how to feed their kids nutritionally. And also, there's another thing that I found out, a lot of our kids, especially our low-income kids, they don't know how to go and get a Pell Grant. For us to go ahead and address those kids that need to learn how to get on the internet and apply for that Pell Grant, that's a need that I see here in our community. Our programs not only talk about, but we are very careful to be a role model in social acceptance and moral development. With the city's help, our programs can be necessary tools for our children's need to succeed. A partnership between the city of Florisville and the All City Youth Programs will enhance the educational, social, and moral development of our youth. In this partnership, we are looking for facility support. We are looking for recognition by endorsement from you. We are looking for help in procuring grants. Not that we want you to do the grants for us, but that when we go after a grant and we need a partner, we would like for you to be our partner. That would not only help our program, but it would help you, help with maybe the facility. So if you find out something that you can do to better equip the gym, and you need a nonprofit to help you, we're here. And also, and most importantly, we need public support. Because I know sometimes people might get angry because they're seeing us scheduled down there, and I have seen that there are rumors going around that Boys and Girls Club's doing this, Boys and Girls Club's doing that. We don't want that with All City Programs. We are a viable program that's within our city, and we want to work along with all of our entities here, all of them. And we can do it with the city's support, with their backing, with their encouragement, and with their positive thinking. In conclusion, I would like to say that All City Youth Programs will be nearing Boys and Girls Club of Wilson County. Nothing will change except the name. We will transition into our new name at the end of the spring season. As of now, we have taken the name down from the public eye, and we'll change our 501(c)(3) and our bank accounts once all donation pledges have cleared. We have cleared that with Fay Beard, who is our operational development director with Boys and Girls Club. We have talked to her, because I think in the letter, you'll see that Boys and Girls Club gave us 30 days. There is no way we can transition all this in 30 days. So she has told us that, because we're in the middle of our programs, so she told us that at the end of the season, we need to be completely turned over to our new name, which will be the All City. The programs we have been offering this community over the last seven years have grown, as have our participants. We will still be helping those kids who need it most by offering no-charge programs. A partnership will secure our programs to continue even after changes in council, in city managers, and four A board members. This is why we're wanting that partnership, because every time we have a change, we have new numbers coming up and going, "Well, why are they over there? What are they doing over there? Are we supporting them? What's going on?" We need to have that security, that you guys are behind us 100 percent. Most importantly, not only will this partnership between the city of Florisville and All City Youth Programs enhance the educational, social, and moral development of our youth, but it will secure a place and a way to run these programs within this community. I would also like you to go one more page, and you will see there where we have listed all of the kids in our spring program, their names, what city that they come from, and you will also see which kids have scholarship. Now, for instance, let me go to the end of this, because there's a lot of kids in the soccer. In our soccer program, for instance, 2015 spring, we have a total of scholarships that we have given out of 66. Florisville scholarships with 53 children. Elmendorf got one scholarship. Converse got two scholarships. Laverne got two scholarships. Pope got four scholarships. Atkins got two, and McCoy's got two scholarships. But as you can see, 53 out of that 66 was Florisville, and our Florisville kids are getting the majority of the benefit from our program. You'll see that we have 183 Florisville kids who are participating in our soccer program. One came from Elmendorf. Two came from Converse. Twelve came from Laverne. Nine came from Pope. Nine, Atkins. Two, McCoy. Two from Fall City. One from Carrington. Two from Kennedy. Four from Pleasanton. Seven from Stockdale. Two from Natalia, and three came from San Antonio. So as you can see, these people coming into our town, they're stopping before they go home. They're buying gas. They're going to the grocery store. They're going to the stores that they don't have in their small towns like Bell's, like what other town, what other stores that we have here? Oh, Whataburger's a big one. They all like going to the Whataburger. I hear that, oh, and the Thai restaurant. That's very popular among our volleyball players. So that's just soccer. If you go to the very last page, you will see that the scholarships in volleyball were 28. So the Florisville scholarships were 27. We had one other scholarship from Carrington. The total Florisville participants were 87 kids. Twelve came from Carrington. Five from Laverne. Two from Kennedy. Two from Runge. One from San Antonio. One from Pleasanton. One from Fall City. One from Stockdale, and one from Atkins. And by the way, when all these people are coming into that event center from volleyball, they're noticing you guys in that ballroom. They're wanting to go over there and look. And I'm sure Gloria can tell you that since we've been there, the numbers of her renting have probably gone up for weddings, and I do know that most of the schools around here are now doing their prom over there. They've been introduced, being at our volleyball games, they're going, "Hey, look what's over here." To go ahead and give you a count on the money that's costing our program to do these scholarships, the total cost of scholarships for us just this spring is $5,030. That's the money that's costing us to bring these kids into our program free. But I guarantee you, it is worth every penny, because that is our whole goal, is to have the kids that need the help the most. And all they have to do is show us that they are on Medicaid, or they are on a free lunch program, and with that, they get their scholarship. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Question, really?
Yes.
How many days are we utilizing the event center?
In, like, for instance, after Thanksgiving, we don't use the center at all until probably, I believe, March. Didn't we start in March? Where's Gloria? Is she still here? Didn't we start our programs in March when we were using for the alcohol? We started in March, right?
Full-time, as far as your full program starts in March?
Yes.
And you had a few in January, some in February, your practices or whatever?
Yeah, we had a couple of kids that came in there because of bad weather. They wanted to come in and use the center, but it was nothing that anybody else wasn't coming in and using it for bad weather also.
But you, area are you using basketball inside?
We're using the basketball gym area. We're at the two doors that say Sports Center. You go in there. We're not using the classrooms. We have our office in the back of the gym, and you're more than welcome to come visit us if you want to and see the layout. And then we have the gym. In the summer program now, we do utilize that whole side, the classrooms, the long room, the gym. Those are all utilized.
I have an issue with using it all summer day. The reason why, I know that it could do a good job.
Thank you.
I applaud you for that. We are having issues with no dive and lots. Therefore, the citizens from Florisville cannot use those, and I, and they, no.
What we can do to help that is, I've been trying to work with Gloria very hard when I know that somebody's wanting to use the gym. We work very hard on working our schedule where she has open days to schedule, and we can continue doing that. It's not readily known that we do that, but I have bent over backwards trying to make sure. Once our schedule is in, it's hard for us to change it. But if I have an idea what days need to be opened, and I've already talked to Gloria about that today, like next year, we need to make sure. We were using, doing like Saturday mornings for practices, and that gave us more weekday openings, but that changed, and we could go back to that. It's just, however you guys want to do it, we will work to open that up. We want to share with the community. We know that this is a necessary thing for all of our community, and we will do the best job that we can to open that up for what you're asking. That's another reason why-
I've been getting a lot of complaints that they're booked, we can't go in there, we got to pay a high fee.
Well, I don't have anything to do with the fee.
Well, but y'all's kids don't pay, do they? Pay the same fee that, that, for me? No, I'm talking about-
I know what you're saying, the All City, like the All City Youth Program. And to go ahead and, just for your information, because I know that you're probably unaware, and I know that as a councilperson, that you get a lot of people that sometimes are angry, and they're coming up, and all you really hear is the complaint side, and not all the time do you hear the other side of the story, and that's why I hear, like Spurs, a lot of our basketball kids, they haven't been being charged coming in there. We've had other kids, group organizations, that as long as they tell Gloria that they're a nonprofit, she's been allowing them to come in. But the people that are not nonprofits, that are coming in just to use the gym, that is a four A board decision. I have nothing to do with that, and for you to change that, Juan, you're going to have to talk to the four A board or discuss that with Ms. Turner, because I don't have any control over that. All I can tell you is, is that I can open up times for, to have as many people in there as possible. We do share. We're not trying to hog it. And we can understand the importance of that at the center, everybody.
Ms. Bolt, is the city of Florisville the only city that you've come to to ask for assistance?
I, like, next summer, because the first time when we went after the Phelps Grant that y'all did, we were awarded that grant. And then the next summer, it was spread around a little bit, which was fine, because, you know, we've got a lot of people within the community. At that time, I wanted to go and see, because I know the other cities get part of that grant, which would be Laverne, Stockdale, and Pope. And I was going to go see if I could get some monies from them, because I have those kids coming into our program, into our summer program. But to tell you the truth, I didn't have time. Because once summer hits, I'm there 12 and 15-hour days, and if I don't get, do that early, then I miss out on my opportunity.
The reason I'm asking is just because, I mean, you come to the city of Florisville to ask for, or-
No money.
Well, just even in kind, and, you know, if the other cities that you bring children from, you know, such as Carrington, Kennedy, you know, other counties as well, you know, I mean-
But I do have, I do have-
That'd be very beneficial for you to-
And it is, and I will go ahead and say this in defense of some of our other cities. I know that Carrington City has been very generous. One of the parents from the volleyball team donated the vehicle that I'm driving in to our program because they liked our program so much. That was wonderful. We had one gentleman from Marathon Oil that donated $1,000 to us last year. He was with, he was working down there in Carrington City with the construction group with Marathon Oil. And again, this year, he donated $1,000. A lot of our other towns, like Pope and Stockdale, they don't really have a lot of money. It's hard, and I'm not asking cash money from you guys, and I don't know how I would get in kind from them, you know what I'm saying? So it's kind of tricky. But they do understand that they have the program here, and they are very grateful. And another thing I would like to just mention to you guys is that Florisville has a wonderful opportunity, because you guys are the county seat. You are the parent city of this whole county. For you guys to stand up and be role models to the other cities and show them how to embrace all the youth of our community and what you can do for this community and for theirs. You're taking a big step as far as having given hearts and showing the rest of them how to do it right.
I applaud you, Debbie, but not just other cities and only this county, but other counties.
Yes, and like I said, they have been giving, Carrington County has been very generous to us. Very generous.
Let me add some things. I brought, I went to the All City Youth Program, Boys and Girls Club meeting last week, Thursday, and there's a couple of people set up on this, on this council, and then also a couple of people in the audience, that can tell you that the reason we built that part of the facility was for a viable youth program to take over and offer these programs.
Yes.
It'd be nice to be able to roll out people with basketballs and let people have a free-for-all, come in, say, "Hey, play basketball," you know, all day long, so you're not out lots. But the thing is, in order to do something like that, you've got to have someone overseeing the kids.
Yes.
I mean, when you're out here at this basketball court or a little basketball court, there's nobody out there, you don't know what's going on, what activities are going on. So we can't have that in a city facility, just have people in there playing basketball, you know, they ain't defined.
Right.
So that side of the facility was intended for organizations to come in and offer these programs, and that is what Ms. Bolt's is trying to do. Whether it's the Boys and Girls Club or it's the All City Youth Program, these are programs that are being offered to the city. I'll go back even further, you know, in 2003, when we were doing the YMCA.
Yes.
At that time, there was two things you could do here in Florisville. Basically, there was no football, okay? There was Little League, and I think the Spurs League was around, and then soccer had just started. And you can tell you also, there was a big gap, and there was no soccer involved. So there was three things you could do in the city of Florisville.
Right.
You know, play basketball, Little League, or soccer, and that's it. So today, they have volleyball for girls, you know, they have, to have swimming, they have these after-school programs, have a place where they can go, and then offer these scholarships on top of that. That's 53 kids just in the spring, who may have just been sitting at home, not doing anything.
Yes.
You know, if their parents don't have the money to put them in these sports, they're probably out working, they fight work nights, or sitting at home by themselves, watching TV, being watched by older brother. And here, we're offering them a program, you know, like you started off with the Pope and David Bitter, about offering them the opportunity.
Yes.
I think that's what we're doing. Now, back to the whole, you know, tenant rent issue. Anytime you, you're an owner of a facility, you have someone, you know, occupying that space, there's always going to be tension between the tenant. They're never paying enough. They're never doing this right, and- They're never paying enough, they're never doing this right, and, you know, you wish they could do this, or, you know, they did that, but that's, that's part of the game. I mean, uh, no one's gonna basically come in and occupy that space and hear, I'll give you ten thousand dollars a month to use the gym or anything else. That's not gonna happen. And, and there's, you know, the facility's been around long enough to where, if it was gonna happen, it would've happened already.
Yes.
You know, so we've gotta work with these programs, or willing, they're not, they're asking for in-kind, you know, the same way that we pay for the lights at Little League, for them to play their baseball games. I mean, she's asking for the in-kind for, for the gym to lose, you know, or the, or their classrooms to be made. So, if we truly built this facility, uh, to, you know, the banquet center to be the revenue generator, and the other side to be for the community to use, now, it's up to the community to take advantage of these programs. Not us to say, hey, well, we have to offer free time for you to come play basketball. Now, she does use a gym quite a bit, but her program requires a gym. Now, the Spurs League, they have two gyms, um, and they're not really aware that they can use that third gym. So, they, and they have two other facilities. This is kind of a, a luxury to have this starting, they hold their tournaments, and, you know, I have my practices there, you know, I tell the other coaches, contact Gloria, you can have your practices here in the evening, you know, so that way you're not having to practice, you know, late nights at the A Street General, that's good. So, you know, I applaud Debbie, which has been doing, she hasn't, she just didn't start seven years ago. She started, you know, when I was seven years old, coaching me in baseball and soccer. So, she's been doing this for a long time. So, I mean, I think we, we owe it to her to give her the support. Because we're not supporting Debbie both, we're supporting the youth of Florisville, Carls City, of Laverne, you know, they don't have this facility. And the more people that we get to come here to Florisville, you know, if you, if, if I play all my sports, you know, in this town, it's just that I live here. So, you may get more people actually moving here, because this is where everything's at. You know, and at the same time, you get people, uh, Diane can tell you, you know, if you're getting people to come here to buy real estate, you know, at River Bay, anywhere else, what programs do you have for the youth? You know, what can my kid do while I'm here? That's a big part on why you move to, you know, Florisville outside of any other, you know, urban population. So, I applaud you, Debbie, you have my support, and I know this was just here as a presentation.
Yes.
We have a, uh, uh, we have a meeting with the 4A coming up, which we need to discuss some of the logistics, as far as the, the facilities you're using, what the rent is, what the rent could be, and so forth, and I think that's together, we can work something out and order everything.
I would like to add that, um, we, um, are looking on a, um, partnership agreement. Uh, we have an attorney that's looking at it. The partnership agreement that we're looking at is basically the same thing as the lease, because we understand in your lease, you have in there protections for the city. So, all of that stuff's not gonna be changed, other than we are going to be using the word partnership. Um, and then, but I did not bring that to you today to look at it. I will get a packet for each council member to look at, so we can get on the agenda at your next city council meeting and make a vote on that. Um, but our board has to look it over, which they have not had a chance to do, to see if they're all in agreement with it, before we present it to council. Is that how it is, everybody?
Mayor, we do have a workshop scheduled for the thirty-first of the meeting, uh, and 4A, and the all-city programs on the gym. So, if you can get that to the attorney, our attorneys, you can do that as well, and then we're ready, because I think one of the questions the council asked before is financials, and I haven't had any, uh, financials, and the thought schedule, uh, scholarship is due, is of, uh, I have, um, I think the people that we actually gave scholarships to last year, uh, to come forward and see if they want to apply, and though, come to me, I told you, we had someone who missed a debt run last year, so we want to make sure the football people get in this year, uh, and apply. I believe it's somewhere around six thousand dollars. But, uh, when, uh, we can take direction, we're going to do something to appear on the agenda following the workshop meeting, I can see what we're prepared. But I think, I know, Mayor, particularly, you've asked for financials, I don't have any, uh, but that's one of the questions. You've asked of staff, and I can't provide it for you. So, you can direct that to the hall, so you can give that information to me.
Can you provide that as well, financials?
Yes, and, yes, I can. Um, is there anything else?
Are you having a send for Eastern?
Can I what?
Are you having a send for Eastern?
Um, probably not. Not a big deal. I like to go to the boys' house and let them do all the cooking now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to new business, three A, consideration in action to approve your proclamation for counting the oil at the center for your ten-year anniversary, because we had a philosophy, we just need to go through it. So, can I have a motion?
Smooth.
Second? Okay, a motion by Councilman DeHalen, second by Councilman Leguiz, Councilman DeHade, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman, please. Motion carries, boys, zero, okay. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item three B, consideration in action to approve the disbursement, twenty-five thousand dollars of hotel, hotel tax funds on March thirtieth, twenty-fifteen, for Balloon Fest. Uh, here is, because on your package, you have some of the same information that we provided from the last, uh, I believe, Richard Cuntz is in the off, office, in the audience, if you have any questions, but I'm getting late. I've been at the conference in eight parts of morning. So, um, if you have any questions to staff and/or the developer, you can, yeah.
Sure, what's staff's recommendation?
Uh, staff are recommending that we actually extend the funds, and we are recommending that we, uh, support this event.
Mayor, is there a progress to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that, uh, we approve the disbursement of twenty-five thousand dollars of hotel, hotel tax for the River Bay Balloon Fest.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman DeHalen, second by Councilman, please, Councilman DeHade, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman, please.
Yeah.
Motion carries, boys, zero.
My mayor, council members, thanks a lot for approving it, and keep our fingers crossed for sunny skies, no clouds, no winds. Uh, hope I see you guys on the meeting. Thank you.
I am there.
Thank you, sir.
We get complimentary rights, do we? We get complimentary rights?
Well, actually, part of the fact is that, which I have a discussion about, is actually, um, gonna be like a sponsorship, and there's so many fries there. Then, we're hoping that we can work with one of our nonprofits that can wrap them up as a fundraiser. I believe the Parks Foundation volunteered for that. So, we'll have some fries, and we'll be able to wrap them up, and so they can have a fundraiser.
Okay, before we go on to the next one, I'm gonna make a quick announcement, 'cause I'm losing people, and I, you gave me this, and I can't do it, I'm sorry. Just to let everyone know that this Saturday, March twenty-eighth, we're having the citywide cleanup. So, if you have anything, the seniors getting free, our yard will be open, there'll be extra, like, um, bins, roll-offs, where you can take your trash. They'll be going around the city, picking up branches. You just need to call the city hall office and put your name on the list.
Yes, and I think at last count, we were somewhere around thirty addresses.
Sorry, I should've been in very good.
No, but thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item three C, consideration in action to amend the bylaws for the Florisville Visitors and Territories Bureau to include residency requirements for appointed members. Councilman DeHalen?
Mayor, uh, if you're calling, I brought this up at our discussion at our last meeting. We have a, a seven-member board that we're going to be appointing, and there are no requirements from either, from, from the seven board members to be residents of Florisville. Out of the seven, not one has to be from Florisville. And as our attorney pointed out last week, it could be anybody, anywhere. So, I feel that we need to have some parameters, and who gets to serve on this committee. I would like to recommend that, uh, obviously, the city of Florisville appoint people from, from Florisville, the Wilson County Hospital, and, uh, the Florisville ISD, and, and the County of Wilson, to be at least within the Florisville ISD. The Chamber of Commerce should be residents of Florisville, the EDC should be residents of Florisville, one other entity. Is that it?
Yes, sir, we have the county, the hospital, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and the school district, and then two appointments from the city of Florisville.
So, is that six or seven?
They're saying for the resident.
Two city, one hospital, one ISD, one county, one chamber, and one at the EDC.
Yes, I think, I, I would suggest that we have the Florisville, the city of Florisville, the Florisville Chamber, the Florisville EDC to be residents of Florisville, and the other three entities to be at least within the Florisville ISD.
Are you, when you say Florisville, are you incorporating the ETJ or?
Yeah, anybody.
In, within the city of Florisville?
Within the school district.
Within the school.
That, whenever he mentions.
The city of Florisville, I think, should be within the city of Florisville proper.
Within the city limits?
Yes, city of Florisville, yes.
No, not the city limits, he's saying the.
Well, that's what, that's what I was asking him, and he's saying, he's, there's, there's two different, uh, there's two different parts to that, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
You're, you have one part of it that's saying that the, that the Collie Memorial, and who else at least could have, has to be within the Florisville ISD?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think what you're saying, that you want EDC to be from the city of Florisville, city limits.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Of course, the two for the city of Florisville be in the city limits.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the one for the Chamber of Commerce should be in the city limits.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other entities, such as the county and the hospital, and even the school district itself, should be within the ISD.
Correct.
It sounds like it's a three of three.
A school district, or district area.
There's a four?
Four, 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 three.
Four, three. Okay, so there's EDC.
EDC.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, Florisville.
And then the city.
The city of Florisville?
City has two.
So, that's four.
Oh, that's four. So, that's Florisville as well.
That's four.
And then the other would be from the recommendation of Mr. Tahada, would be within the school district or whatever.
And which, that's the Collie Memorial.
And the County of Wilson.
Wilson County.
Wilson County?
Wilson County, the school district, and the hospital.
Correct.
School district, and the hospital.
Thank you.
Mr. Judge?
I think I'm, I'm okay with all of them, with the exception of the chamber, because the chamber is a lot larger than, than just the city of Florisville. To, you know, to have the patisserie of Wilson County, or at least a chamber member.
Are you asking staff's recommendations? Are you asking for my opinion?
Yes.
Uh, I, I have to agree that the ones from city of Florisville definitely should be there. We can tell you, I just don't know if the hospital, and I know I spoke to the council chairman about that, if the hospital sends me somebody that their marketing agent, she doesn't live in Florisville, she lives in San Antonio. And so, I'm just not on having a professional from the hospital to be here, that could volunteer her time to be able to do that. She's pretty active. I know she works very hard with Gloria on some, she's gonna do yoga and some other things. So, I'm just saying, some, that's just an example, but that's somebody you may have sat on because of the restriction that you're giving, and reference to that. Not to say it can't happen, I'm just saying that that's something you need to think about as you restrict the people to ask it to come. Because we're asking a lot for them to donate their time, and I know the mayor has been a champion for me, and has spoken to people, everybody's willing to, to send someone, but we're gonna actually put some restrictions on other entities that we're asking to volunteer their time. Definitely two from, from Florisville should be city of Florisville. And then those entities that you appoint people to, such as the EDC, definitely should be from Florisville. That actually gives you three votes on the board. Um, Chamber, I don't know, I don't know, I think the last Chamber president didn't even live in the city of Florisville at all. And so, um, I'm not quite sure about the current president, the old Chamber president.
But the, the Chamber's promoting Florisville businesses.
But you're requiring, maybe, that they have to live within your school district area.
Which is very beneficial because of the heads of beds and, you know, their, of business. You know, and so, I mean, if I can make a, a recommendation just to have the city of Florisville and the EDC restricted to the city of Floris, the corporate city limits of Florisville, and, you know, and that'd be the only restriction. Because, I mean, we, you know, we obviously have to accommodate the Collie Memorial, we have to accommodate the Chamber, and, you know, and the school district, of course, I mean, you're gonna get somebody from the school district. So, I mean, and then Wilson County, you'll get somebody from the county. Uh, so, I, those are, that, those would be my recommendations, is just the city of Florisville to be for the city of Florisville and the EDC.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Tahada, I, I think the only problem under the head is, I look at this being like the TIF. And on the TIF board, you've got the River Authority, you've got, uh, the county, you've got various districts, the only entity publicly that is on the, that's not on that board is the school district. And I think it's difficult to say that you can only appoint somebody to the TIF if they live inside Avalon, and we didn't do that. Um, I think the restrictions that the two gentlemen are talking about, the two that you're talking about on both ends here, would make some sense. I have a problem with the hospital district, and I have a problem with the county. We're trying to establish good relations with the county, and work with the county starting Monday morning at nine-thirty. And I don't really wanna be in a position telling the county that the only person they can put on this committee to promote Florisville is somebody that lives in Florisville, when we're trying to make peace with the county on a bunch of land use issues and other policy issues, which are important to us.
No, within the Florisville ISD.
Well, the same thing goes there. I mean, the county, county-wide, and we're trying to make interlocal agreements with the county. Same thing with the school district. We've got these many issues with the school district, and I think it's sufficient that somebody appointed by the school district live within the school district boundaries. And, and so, I'd kind of pick between the two of you, uh, a medium ground, or middle ground, is the best way to say it. If you have the EDC within the city, if you have the two city people within the city, if you wanna restrict the chambers, this is private organization. I think that's fine. For public, for electric organizations, I think it's difficult to restrict them to somebody that lives within the city when the district's got a lot wider political jurisdiction.
But, but I think the recommendation is to go all the way to San Antonio.
Well, that happens to be where they're employed, I mean, where they come from for purposes of employment.
Well, we, uh, I think we threw a council member out because they had a business in here, but didn't live here.
Well, I understand that. That's a specific charter requirement and, and motive requirement, okay? And the only reason I'm saying that is, I'm trying from the perspective.
Why don't we, why don't we say this? If there's somebody who lives outside those parameters, then they come up for council.
No, I'd agree with that.
Can we do that?
I, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, yes, and anybody could do a recommend, that, that name, that they would actually submit directly.
If they don't meet those requirements, that they come for council approval.
Uh, you mean, you're, you're adding another step in there, I mean.
Well, they get, in this case, they, they live in San Antonio.
And that's fine. I mean, if, 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 if they're traveling over here to work to begin with, you know, you'd be poor.
Now, now, the way I think, if I heard it right, and I think it was Councilman Council, I mean, Braggus's request is that you would have four, the city of Florisville citizens would have four of the seven votes.
Three. You have one for the EDC and two from the city.
And the chamber.
And the chamber.
The chamber.
Okay, the chamber.
That would give you four of the seven, and so, the city of Florisville residents would have the majority of that board vote.
Well, I would want to incorporate the, not just the city, I mean, to have the chamber with at least county-wide.
But you have a county representative on there. I mean, the chamber, you have a representative from the county on that board. And so, if you would have your, you restrict your chamber to have a residence of Florisville, the city of Florisville to have a representative, which counts for two, and then EDC that gives you four. So, you would have, the residents of Florisville would have a majority vote, which would give you four of the seven.
Okay, then.
Does that seem more fair and equitable?
Sure, yeah.
You would have four of the seven, sorry. You have four of the seven votes. Because the city of Florisville would send two representatives, one, two, that would be from Florisville. And if you require EDC's representative to be a citizen of Florisville, that would give you three. If you require the chamber member to be a citizen of Florisville, that would give you four. So, you would have a majority vote.
And the other three would be from?
Wherever they.
They're delegated.
The three would be whatever they, they would select. So, the Wilson County would send someone from wherever Wilson would do, the hospital would send their representative, and who's that? The school district.
You would think, uh, Councilman Tahada, the, the other entities, I mean, you know, FISD's gonna be from this area, the county and hospital, if they are appointed or volunteered, that they'd have some kind of, uh, you know, right intention of representing the city of Florisville for whatever aspect, maybe, because I know, if I had no concern or issue, I don't know, why would I set up and come over here and volunteer? I mean, you're thinking, you're gonna get someone, you know, that would do.
Or even accept the representation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, accept the representation.
Mayor, can I ask a question? With regard to the chamber, if a person owned a business that's business in Florisville, provided funding for the sales tax, but lived outside of the Florisville, are we gonna exclude you? it?
That, that was what my concern was, is, is to actually, uh, kind of go outside of the city limits, the corporate city limits, to go outside of it and include people at least from the city of Florisville. You know, to have Florisville as their address, or even Wilson County, as, have Wilson County as their, their residency.
Yeah, we really wanna have, you know, somebody that lives out of state, for example, owns a business here, but I think the folks who do business here and they live reasonably close to the city, and I can't give you a number, but being fair to those businesses that are here and are here every day.
Now, the chamber, whenever they delegate, or whenever they, uh, choose the board, them